Good. Good evening. I'd happily like to call to order the May 12th, 2021 Regular School Committee meeting in person at our auditorium in the high school at 6:00 PM this evening. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategies relative to collective bargaining and/or personnel matters. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive section. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. DeMoss, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene our regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the May 12, 2021, regular school committee meeting at 6:31 PM. At this time, I would ask that we take a moment and observe a moment of silence for Brianna McCarthy. Unfortunately, Brianna, who was just 30 years of age, was a teacher at Monmouth One High School, and assistant hockey coach here at Tewksbury High School, passed away way too young shortly after our last meeting. Certainly, our thoughts and our prayers are with the McCarthy family. Thank you. With that, I would like to ask our newly-elected clerk, Mrs. Garabedian, to please rise and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. And with no recognitions this evening, I'd like to ask our high school student, Mr. Jack Stadman, to approach the podium for his student representative's report, please.
As always, thank you for having me again. Just a few quick announcements or updates, so to say. DECA is still going on strong. All members who have participated in DECA states can pick up their merch that they would have gotten in Boston. The TMHS esports team is still up and running. They've been placing high within other schools in New England in games such as Rocket League and FIFA. They are always looking for new members. If you are interested, please see the morning update for more details. The TMHS Drama Club is working on their latest production of Charlie Brown. This will air virtually on May 21 through May 22. You can buy tickets on the school's website. The class of 2022 is hosting a barbecue at Kimball's Farm over the summer. Any students currently in the class of 2022, if they are interested, please contact anyone on your officer team. A quick congratulations to all Tewksbury Memorial High School students who are recently inducted into NHS. And as always, the Student Council is hosting weekly meetings to discuss new virtual activities for the school. And last, but certainly not least, the Tewksbury Morning Update is still broadcasting, and you can tune in every morning on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stadman. With no presentations this evening, we'd move to Citizens Forum. Is anyone here willing to speak tonight regarding Citizens Forum? Sure. You can go right to the microphone over here, ma'am.
Hello.
Good evening. Could we just get your name and address for the record, please?
Yep. My name is Erin Hud, and my address is 67 Catamount Road.
Thank you.
First, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a mom to a seven-year-old who, for the record, I pulled out of Tewksbury Public Schools this year. I pulled my child because it became clear that politically-driven teachers' unions across the state were putting up barriers and finding any reason to keep children out of a classroom. My husband is an essential worker, and while I do work from home, I could not risk having to be my child's teacher while maintaining my full-time job. I would like nothing more than to re-enroll my child into Tewksbury Public Schools, which is why I'm here tonight to speak directly about the cruel safety protocols forced upon our children. I'm sure, if you didn't notice, I walked in tonight with a sign. For those that didn't see it, it says, "If we move schools to restaurants, kids can take off their masks." I made the sign and brought it with me tonight to highlight the absurdity of the rules and guidelines. At the beginning of this virus, we were all scared. We all wanted to put safety precautions in place, at least until we better understood who was most at risk. And in life, we have trade-offs. And the people of Massachusetts were willing to trade their liberties and freedoms for safety. However, two weeks to flatten the curve has turned into a year of masking healthy humans and extreme lockdowns. We can't solve for COVID, but we need to be wiser with the trade-offs we are making. Children are at the mercy of the adults around them, and it is that vulnerability that should make all of us think twice before subjecting them to protocols that do not apply to their specific circumstances. Adults who have higher risk should not project their fears or expect the youth to carry the burden of those fears. The burden of proof should be on the district. And not only is there no proof that masks are the solution, there is not even proof that they're a good trade-off. Most schools in Florida and Texas have been fully open this whole year, with masks being optional. Those kids are participating in normal activities, sporting events, without masks, and widespread outbreaks have not occurred. The goal of the school district should not be to remove any and all risks. Now that we know that children are not super-spreaders and that they have mild cold symptoms if infected with COVID, why are we subjecting our healthy children to the potential adverse side effects of mask-wearing and social distancing? Why are we forcing children to carry the burden with no perceived benefit? Why are we teaching our children that healthy people are endangering others by simply breathing? I realize that those who sit here tonight may not make the rules, but I'm asking you to advocate for the removal of masks and social distancing in our schools. As you work with the Board of Health and other state officials, please fight for our children's right to breathe freely in school. For those that think it's too soon to remove these protocols, my question to you is, when then? When do we take the masks off? When do we allow our children to socialize and play with their classmates and just be kids? The vaccine is here. The virus is here to stay. We must learn to live with it. If you want to continue to mask your child, fine. I will fight for your right to make that choice for your child, and I ask that you fight for my right and for all parents' rights to fight to make the best choice for their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mrs. Hud. Your input is certainly very important to us. Thank you for attending this evening. With that, I'll turn it over to our clerk, Mrs. Garabedian, for the approval of our minutes.
Okay, so could we have a motion to approve the minutes from April 14, regular school committee meeting?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the April 14, 2021 organizational meeting. All those in favor signify, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. Unanimous vote. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. And the regular meeting minutes as well.
Oh, yes. A motion to approve the April 14, 2021, regular meeting minutes. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 14, 2021. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. April 14, 2021, regular meeting minutes are approved. I'd also like to go with the clerk for the payroll for this period.
I move the school department payroll for the period ending 4/15/2021 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,401,535.18. I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending April 15, 2021, in the amount of $1,401,535.18. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
And I move that the school department payroll for the period ending to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,434,566.80, period ending 4/29/21.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending April 29, 2021, in the amount of $1,435,566.80. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Malone for his superintendent report.
Um, excuse me?
Sure.
I think you're to be asked if another person wanted to speak, so I'll interrupt.
No, go right ahead.
Okay.
Please state your name and the address for the record, please.
I'm Sarah Steele, 10 Pocahontas Road. I have a couple of questions about our DLC program and how we're moving forward with it. I have recently heard that the DLC at the Heathbrook is being closed, and they are moving back to the Dewing, like they used to. What will that look like for the rest of our students that are at the DLC right now? Are our class sizes going to increase? Are we going to add more teachers there? Will more direct service staff be added, speech, OT, physical therapy? We haven't heard anything, and I've been asking questions at school, and nobody has any answers.
Okay. Can I first ask, is this item on the agenda this evening?
Class sizes on the agenda.
Class sizes are certainly on the agenda. But you have questions regarding the DLC program?
I have questions about are our class sizes going to increase because the DLC at the Heathbrook is being closed and being moved to the Dewing School?
Sure. Mr. Malone, could you take that, please? Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Every year, we engage in looking at class sizes, deployment of classes. Every year, this is a routine we look at. Granted, due to the pandemic, we're probably a little bit later than usual. We have no plans to close a DLC. We may look at whether deployment of students in areas or class sizes may cause classes to condense. Likely, we're probably looking at examining particularly preschool-age students coming in at that level because of the lack of opportunities to assess those students than the typical routes. Because of the pandemic, we could look at an increase in the amount of DLC classes that we have in the district. We're considering all that pieces. With preschool age, it's a little bit different because some of the data and information about who may actually be enrolling in the school district is not exact. But we would expect, and we're trying to plan for, that there may be additional students at that preschool level due to the fact that early intervention really hasn't been up and operational due to the pandemic. So we'll respond to the needs of the students, and if that means we have to increase classes, add a number of classes or condense classes if class sizes go down, we look at all those aspects.
Okay. Will the parents that are currently enrolled in the preschool program be informed before the class sizes either, you know, become smaller or become larger?
Any decision that would involve students changing classes that was not part of a team meeting process, moving up in an age range, or something typical of that nature, yes, we would engage at that time. Typically, we probably have a better idea of where we're at in that process, but due to the pandemic, and I think a big piece is a lot of our information we typically get from early intervention, a lot of that is not available. So we've been kind of projecting the fact that people may not have been accessing early intervention, and we can anticipate that there likely may be a larger number at preschool level than in previous years.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Steele. I appreciate your input. Ms. Steele, sorry. My apologies. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak this evening? Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Malone, I believe you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Just to update the committee on a few pieces. One, we were notified from DESE regards to our special education. Annually, the department must identify each school district's special needs for technical assistance or intervention in the area of special education. The data that that's based on is the five-year cohort graduation rates for students with disabilities, the annual dropout rate for students with disabilities, public school monitoring of special education compliance data, problem resolution system, special education complaint data, performance on special education, state performance plan, annual performance report indicators, and data and findings of significant disproportionality. Each school district is evaluated using a rubric and based on a score and is placed into the special education determination categories. As a result of this determination, the department has not required this district to engage in any specific targeted technical assistance activities. So that's certainly very good news. Other good news is we messaged out to the district, but we're very proud of the fact that Tewksbury Memorial High School was named in the top 20% of high schools in the United States. Great article that we put out through U.S. News, but a great, certainly indicator of the success they're having at Tewksbury Memorial High School. So we're very excited about that aspect. This past week was, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. Last Friday was Food Service Worker Day, and today was School Nurse Day. So we've had a lot of celebrations and a lot of appreciation for our staff. All of our staff are doing a great job. Custodians, secretaries, everyone involved with our students. We're very proud of that. But we had some nice PAC-centered teacher appreciation activities go on in the schools last week. We had a nice little gift and celebration for our calf workers on Friday, and we had a nice recognition for our school nurses today. So again, of the impact of this pandemic, certainly appreciating all of our staff and all the work they do is very important every day. But those days all seem to align this week. Jack had mentioned the National Honor Society induction, which was on April 15, which was a great ceremony done here in the auditorium. We did it with the students. Because of social distancing and the pandemic, we weren't able to have parents present. We had two different ceremonies, one induction ceremony for seniors and one for juniors. We had 71 seniors in the induction program and 72 juniors. What a great evening. There were several members here from the school committee present. We appreciate that. Great activity, again, for Tewksbury Memorial High School. We're in that season towards the end of the year, where a lot of these pieces begin to get very busy as we lead up towards graduation. On May 27, it will be Tewksbury Memorial High School Scholarship Night. One of the complications in running that night typically in relation to COVID is we have a significant amount of presenters from the outside who have donated and created awards and scholarship monies. We wouldn't be able to have them here, so it will be a virtual ceremony, but we're very much looking for that on May 27. Some of our students at Tewksbury Memorial High School participated in the MESC Day on the Hill a couple of weeks ago. It's, one of the unfortunate pieces is typically when that is live, it was done virtually this year, the students get a nice tour of the State House, get to see the chamber, get to really meet some of the legislators, particularly the local legislators. There was some great activity. There was some great activity and some debates, debates, a nice presentation by Senator Lewis and Representative Peish, particularly on education elements. So it was, it was great to see. I think our students probably would have got a lot more out if they could have gotten to the State House, but it was still a great event to take part in. As requested by a community member last month, in regards to our presentation on the Patriot Pen winners, we have posted the writings of Kevin Daigle and Christopher Rabado from the Ryan School on our website. There was some community interest to actually read those essays, so those have been posted. And it great, it's great to see community members want to see that actual work by us, so we're very proud of that. Alphabet has messaged out to parents around summer programming. They're doing their best to try to put together a program. They do have to still go through licensure requirements and have a COVID safety plan and all those pieces. They're currently running before and after-school programming at our schools successfully. They are looking at running a summer program out of the rec center down at Livingston. They have some significant parent interest in that. They have some hurdles to get over around getting that facility licensed and doing some other pieces to see what capacity they can handle as far as number of students. But they are moving forward rapidly on planning for that. So hopefully, they'll be able to finalize that planning, and they've messaged out to parents. They have some interest back, and if they can finalize that licensure piece, then they will begin to register those parents and do that piece for the summer. And just a piece out there around traffic in town, particularly since now, all of our schools are back. There's a little bit more bus traffic, there's a little bit more parent traffic with students. We did have a scenario where one of our buses was in traffic and stopped and was hit by a car from the back. None of our students were hurt, but those, those are very scary situations for, for students, for families. So we just really want to encourage everyone out there in town, please be careful around arrival and dismissal times for schools about your travel. There is, you know, more students now coming to school every day since we've moved from a hybrid model to all return. So just please be careful out there. That's all I have at the moment, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure if anyone had any questions.
Sure. I'll start. Mr. Parsons, any questions for the superintendent?
No questions.
Mrs. Garabedian?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Demos?
I'm all set for tonight.
And Mr. Stadman?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Great. Just one comment, Mr. Malone. I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to attend Scholarship Night. It's one of my favorite nights of the year, certainly having all the kids and the parents in here, but I certainly want to give a shout out to the community. There are so many volunteer groups, PACs, clubs, civic groups, youth sports programs, organizations, rotaries, Elks Clubs, charity groups, memorial organizations of people that passed on in this community that continue to give back. Mr. Malone, six figures? I don't know the exact number.
I know the exact number, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to share that?
It is 112 students honored with awards and scholarships totaling over $125,000.
That's 125,000. So I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that. Hopefully, I'll be here that evening, but it's just a wonderful thing about Tuxbury that people continue to care about this community in a way that they're going to give back over $100,000 to over 100 students that are graduating this year. So kudos to everyone. You could never thank everyone. It's thousands of people that work all year that, that do that, whether it's, you know, setting up a car wash, whether it's selling raffle tickets or whatnot, but it's an absolutely wonderful thing that we have going here in town, and I hope it continues. So with that, thank you, Mr. Malone. And we'll go to Mrs. Regan for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to begin my updates with an unusual update of the school committee meeting, and that's MCAS. You probably did not see it on Old Business and thought, finally. But we do have MCAS updates. We have another revised schedule that's been posted to the district website. But first and foremost, I want to tell you that infrastructure trials have been performed at all of our MCAS administrating schools with great success. We are very confident that our network is able to cash and administer the MCAS test beginning next week. Our fully remote learning students, otherwise known as our RLA students and families, have received an updated MCAS letter that went home last week and informs them of the MCAS process. Specifically, grades three through eight students will take the MCAS test remotely. Our school's principals have been training their RLA staff, and the RLA teachers have been training and practicing with their students to take that remote MCAS. Each RLA student is also to receive a new updated device that will help them and assist them in administering this MCAS. We urge all families out there, your principals are reaching out to you. If you have not received your new device or are unsure of the MCAS date for RLA students, please contact your building principal. Our grade nine, 10, and optional grade 11 students will all begin taking their MCAS tests next Monday, May 17th. If you remember, all high school MCAS tests need to be taken in person, whether an in-person student or a remote learner, as this is a requirement for competency determination for graduation. We know that 45 of our juniors have opted in to taking the MCAS. Specifically, 28 of them are taking the MCAS because they need this in order to receive the SEAL of By Literacy in their graduating senior year next year. 17 students have identified their reason for taking the MCAS is that they wish to achieve eligibility for the Abigail Adams and Coplik Grant. Juniors, our families watching, you should know there'll be one more opportunity. If you decide you'd like to take the MCAS next fall as a senior, that will help you in your eligibility for the Adams or Coplik Grant. Again, the newly posted schedule for MCAS is on our district dynamic calendar as well as the memo to our families. Last Friday was our annual district art show. As always, it was a great success. We had over 800 attendees on our YouTube TV channel and probably hundreds more watching through local cable. We just don't know those numbers. This visual and performing arts show included original music compositions by our students and original short videos done by our students this year, something a little new. Our very own Jack Stadman was highlighted in the presentation. I want to acknowledge, hundreds of students are highlighted during the presentation, but I do want to acknowledge live tonight, the best of show and winners. Let me start with the doing school. Best of show is Callie Nguyen. The Heathbrook School best of show, Jordan Callahan. At the Treyhan, best in show is Thomas Trowbridge. And at the North Street, our best in show is Maja Hadjouk. At the Ryan, best in show winner is Morgan Malphi. And at the Wynn, Lillian Johnson. Our high school first place winners are Milo Babodis, Molly Kremen, Alyssa Devlin, Gianna Flynn, Anthony Freitas, Haley Ferrillo, Nicole Goss, Navayu, I'm sorry, Neviu Lacey, Derek Monroe, Cassie Norwood, Michaela Page, Victoria Pinto, Janissa Safran, Mackenzie Young, Henry Pastana, Christina Russell, Dominic Vawey, Elena Walazek, Aleah Williams, and Shreya Athlea, Athlea, I'm sorry. And best in show at the high school is Isabella Alfano. Congratulations to all our students and our deepest gratitude to our visual and performing arts teachers. Truly, you are the support and the nurturing force behind our budding artists throughout their kindergarten through 12th grade years at Tuxbury Public Schools. We truly appreciate all that you do for our students. This list, as well as all of our honorable mention artists highlighted at the art show, will be posted to the Tuxbury Public School website as well as a link to the show. I think it's worth noting again, Tuxbury Memorial High School drama performance of Your Good Man, Charlie Brown, will be aired virtually on May 21st and 22nd, and people can find the information for that show on the high school district webpage. All right. Next Wednesday, May 19th, is an early release day for students, but a full day for our staff. Teachers and district-wide will be collaborating with their building principal and their own professional learning communities to look at ways in which they can improve learning for the rest of the school year and student data analysis to make informed decisions in regards to next school year and curriculum needs for our student instruction next year. I think the time will be very well spent, and this is part of our impact bargaining as we came back to full in person. This is one of the PD days we really thought was important for our staff to look at how are our students performing and how can we assist them throughout the rest of the year. May 28th will also be an early release day for both staff and students, and as a reminder to anyone watching, you can find early release times for all of our schools on the calendar legend, which is on our district website calendar page. And that concludes my updates tonight.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? Mrs. Regan, I just had one question. I think I know the answer, but it's great to hear all these students taking MCAS to be able to qualify for the SEAL and the Abigail Adams. Do we have a date yet for those juniors next year or not that could possibly take it as a senior?
I do not, but I will certainly report that once we have that.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
With that, I'd like to turn it over to our business manager, Mr. David Libby.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, a couple of financial updates for the committee. FY '22 budget was successfully approved at town meeting last week in the amount of $51,938,935 combined for our salary operating and capital outlay budgets. Those are the areas of the budget we generally control. It represents about a 2.8% increase over FY '21. Additionally, we wanted to report on our COVID grant status thus far through the year. To date, the town has received five COVID grants totaling approximately $2.4 million. The big thing we need to keep an eye on when managing those grants is the allowable expenses and the, the end date of the grant. Three of those grants totaling about $900,000 expire in 2021. So those will be the funds we look to spend first and use that money as it, as the earliest expiration date. We'll carry about $1.5 million in two ESR grants that extend beyond 2021. Specifically, ESR 1 expires in September of 2022 for $280,000. The ESR 2 grant expires in 9/23, and Tuxbury received approximately $1.2 million in ESR 2 money. And coming soon, we'll know our ESR 3 grant award, but we do know that that has an expiration of September of 2024. So we feel like we're in a pretty good position to handle any unknown COVID-related expenses that should come up in the district over the next year, two, or three. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Libby. Any questions for my colleagues?
I have no questions.
Great. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Libby. Seeing none, we're going to move on to tonight's consent agenda. Do any one of my colleagues have any issues with tonight's consent agenda? Questions, comments?
No, no issues or concerns, but I'd like to just say how much I appreciate seeing that our schools are able to get back to some of our extracurricular things and activities outside of school. So that's really exciting to see.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda as proposed in the...
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. Tonight's consent agenda is passed as presented. We're going to go on to committee reports. We're going to start with the elementary school building committee and Mrs. Demos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I unfortunately had to miss the last elementary school building committee due to a prior commitment. So from what I, Mr. Malone, I'm not sure if anything new happened on that meeting that I missed to report.
No major changes to progress as if you are able to get by the site. You're beginning to see we're moved on from still girders to poured cement floors to now exterior framing with some HVAC decisions that have to be made by the committee. We have a committee meeting tomorrow night, some other pieces of that nature. The field committee continues to meet as well. The field project is, is certainly on target as well, a little bit ahead of the school as in the design and the schedule of the plan. But things are, things are moving quickly, and we're really trying to look at what the construction site is going to look like for us in the fall so that we can manage the Ryan School and try to really nail down an opening date for the school.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Malone. And the Tuxbury CPAC, Mr. Parsons?
Yes. All right. CPAC is holding a meeting on May 20th from 7:00 to 8:30. It is their election meetings. At this time, nominations are closed. The meeting will be held virtually. Information on accessing the meeting has been posted with the town clerk and emailed out. If members are looking for login info, they can email tuxburycpac@gmail.com. Topics discussed include elections, updates from the Tuxbury Public Library, a discussion around school safety concerns, summer school planning, discussion of bylaws for the addition of a student representative, and a discussion to reestablish a Friends of CPAC organization for the purpose of fundraising. April, they had their second parent support group meeting of the year, which was well-attended. New attendees are welcome to join.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Appreciate the update. And Mrs. Garabedian, the wellness advisory committee?
Yeah, so I've reached out and spoken with our lead nurse, Kelly Constantino, and at this time, the wellness committee has not been meeting, and there are plans for that to reestablish in early next year.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Demos for the policy this evening.
Thank you. So the policy that we have in front of us tonight is IHBG, and it is the homeschooling policy. As you'll remember, we had our informational reading on this policy back in November of 2020. It has been reviewed and it has been revised. Our school council and the homeschool family representatives are happy. I am comfortable with where we're at, but I do encourage families that are interested in this policy to reach out with any comments or any discussion points that they would like for us to hear, as this tonight is our first reading, which means that in June will be the second reading, and it'll be time for us to all vote on what we will now implement as our new homeschooling policy. So we do have some time to talk. It is posted, it is out there for everybody's review, so now is the time to read it for anyone that is interested, to reach out to either myself, John Stadman, or Nick Parsons, and we can have some conversations prior to the June meeting, as at that point, it'll be voted in.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. And just for the record, that's the policy, IHBG homeschooling.
Yes.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure we have that on the record.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Moving along, we're going to go on to old business, the class count enrollment update. Is that Mr. Malone or Mrs. Regan? Mrs. Regan, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll take this one. Just what you have in front of you, which is typically in your consent agenda, is our current class counts and current enrollment update. And we put this in old business because last committee meeting, if you remember, Mrs. Demos, you had asked if we had growth or new enrollment or more RLA, full remote learners who wished to come back to the classroom, did we have room? And I think you were particularly interested too in the, those greenhouse classrooms at the Treyhan, which are smaller in comparison to the other classrooms there. So what I have done for you in this... So what I have done for you in this updated enrollment is, first of all, our remote learning classes, our RLA academy, if you will, are in red, so that helps you look at the in-person class counts. We are also asked our principals to walk around. We've looked at all of our in-person classrooms, looked for space, is there space in each of those rooms for growth? And I can confidently tell you that they have each done that, and there is. Now, I highlighted those four greenhouse classrooms to just illustrate, right now, the current enrollment, you can see Ms. Zarulis's classroom has 20 students in person, and Mr. Harding is confident at best he would put, he can fit one more desk. And the same goes for Ms. Gagny, Ms. O'Meara, Ms. Fagan. They can all go to 21 if they had to. He would not do that first, because he has two other fourth-grade classrooms that he could fit up to three to four more desks. Now, again, this is with the minimum three-foot distancing, and certainly if more classroom furniture other than student desks needed to be removed, he would do that. I'm going to tell you why I don't think that will happen. If you look at the fourth-grade RLA class, they're at 10 students. It's highly unlikely that all 10 of those students would be coming back to in-person before the end of the school year, or that we'd have that much movement in new students. So we do have wiggle room. We have some room for growth if we need it, and that is the same scenario across the board. We're very fortunate, and we all, you know, certainly the committee has supported smaller class sizes, and this is the time we've needed it. So we're in good shape K through eight. And if you have no questions on the K through eight current enrollment, I'll just highlight why I included the entire high school, all of the courses for you, just so you could see. I think I told you, we were doing an analysis of every single one of those classes and if they would need overflow space, which we're using the library for overflow. And there's a protocol in place for when teachers are sending them with pass, and then they know where they sat and with what students. Currently, those top three, I sorted them for you, it's only those top three classes. You can see the Algebra II, Childcare II, and Health II, who are currently using that overflow space in the library, because they just could not fit the amount of desks they needed in their classroom. All other classrooms have the space they need to support their students.
So can I ask a few questions now that we've gone through K to 12?
Sure.
So these overflow classrooms at the high school, will we maybe look at capping the number of students in the fall if we're looking at the same protocols of spacing for social distancing?
Yeah.
So that we don't have to do the overflows? Is that a conversation that's being had at the high school level?
We would, I mean, we certainly can't predict right now where we'd be, but yes, it was, I mean, remember, these classes were chosen by students last year. If we need to shuffle, for example, more Algebra II classes or more Health classes so that the class size is lower, then we'll adjust our program of studies that way in course offerings.
Yeah, and then I just want to be clear that when I was asking about the class sizes in those greenhouse rooms, I also want to be aware that I was looking at the Heathbrook and North Street as well that have those. So as I look through what I see as high numbers, I do feel pretty confident that if we can fit 21 at the Trahan, the same greenhouse square footage would be similar at North Street and Heathbrook, so I don't want people to think we're just looking at one school.
Correct.
But I just, I do think that, you know, where the numbers in grade three have a higher RLA and things, at this point in the school year, I think we're pretty confident that we can fit those overflows no matter what school they're in. So I just wanted to clarify that I was looking at all the K to four buildings for it.
Thank you.
But I do appreciate all the information, and I thank you for doing that for me.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any comments? Ma'am, we normally don't take, it's normally not Q and A, but I'll be more than happy to hear what your comment is. If you're more comfortable there, that's fine.
I would like to find out how much of all the calendar options left here.
This is the problem, not following the agenda, not having things. I don't have that information. Certainly, you can reach out to me or any of my colleagues. I'll have the answer for you tomorrow, or Mrs. Reagan, or Mr. Malone. It's down, I don't know exactly, I don't have that information on me. You're welcome.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, again, this was informational only, no vote was needed on this old business point?
Yep.
Okay. Well, next on old business, does require roll call vote, this is the 2022 school committee meeting schedule.
Okay, I'll open it up to my colleagues. I know we had a chance to look at this last meeting, and in the interim, is everyone okay with these dates?
Yes.
That being said, what's the pleasure of the board this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee calendar for 2021-2022 school year.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the school committee meeting schedule for 2022. It requires a roll call vote. Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. That is our established school committing schedule for 2022. Thank you, Mrs. Reagan. And are you doing the more in person, or is that Mr. Malone?
I'll stay right here. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead to the next agenda. I guess I had it all in order, my apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to update the committee, certainly, I think the committee's been very well aware of our process in bringing more students back in with the April 28th date of the middle school and the high school and a full return. That brings all of our schools to a full day of school with full return of all students out of the hybrid model. Certainly, the impact of that, as we look at the data around that, specific to the pandemic, as always, the task force has been meeting on Mondays for over a year now, and one of the main focus of that task force is to look at that data. The most recent data we examined this past Monday was the positivity rate in the town of Tewksbury. That is down to 2.05%, which is the lowest it's been in over six months. We also look at the cases over a two-week period in the school district. We are officially down to, as of this afternoon, single digits in that with nine cases over a two-week period. That certainly does not signal in any way that this pandemic is over, but it certainly singles, looks at some of the data and the trends in the data for the task force. And again, the task force's main mission is to look at the model that the district is utilizing at the given time. If we look at this pandemic, we have been, we've had no school over a year ago, to remote learning in full for the remainder of the year last year, to opening in a hybrid model this year, and now to a full return. The task force function was to help and guide us about which model was appropriate at a given time by looking at that data piece and looking at all our partners in town to review all of that. We've also been in contact with Remote Learning Academy Parents Group and had some discussions specific to those students who have chosen to remain remote for the remainder of this school year, what that transition may look like for those students, what type of interventions we might want to think about this summer to prepare those students for a return in the fall. And we've had some good suggestions from parents and some good ideas, but there is still a good deal of anxiety around there for many of our parents about returning to school. So we'll continue to work on that. We've also presented the new close contact guidance that came out of DESE that specifically relates to close contacts being established within a six-foot distance. The change was those from three to six feet, if identified as a close contact, would not have to isolate. Those three feet or closer would. That's a big lift on our school nurses, trying to interpret that piece on close contacts, whether in school, on the bus, all of those elements. So it's some additional work onto our school nurses to kind of fill that out, because they are notifying all parents if their child is a close contact, but have to differentiate between three to six feet, not required to isolate, and three feet and under, there is required to isolate. So some nuances in there and some management pieces we've looked at. The pool testing continues. We were very happy to hear that we were approved to extend that through the end of the school year, free to the district by the state. We applied for that, and were granted that opportunity, so we're very thankful of that, and thank you to our school nurses who are very involved in it, particularly Helen Constantino, our lead nurse, and Elaine Walsh, who is really heading that pool testing. She is a retired lead nurse from Tewksbury, has really taken this on. We're also making sure we're messaging out around the state travel advisory to make sure families are aware of that. We certainly wanted to make sure we did that heading into April vacation, and as we head closer to Memorial Day, long weekend, we want to make sure families are aware of that travel advisory. We are monitoring vaccinations in school opportunities. There are some districts in the state that have partnered with some local healthcare agencies that have developed plans to do vaccinations in schools. We have not made a determination on that, but we're certainly open to that discussion, and certainly is encouraged by DESE, so we will certainly keep our eyes and our ears open if that opportunity arises. One of the main things the task force was looking at for the most recent meeting that's been on the agenda for a few weeks is, with a full return to school by all students and the anticipation that the data points are likely going to continue to trend the way they are, should the task force still stay in existence with all students having returned to school? We had a discussion a couple of weeks ago about that. We put it off to a vote until Monday, and this past Monday, the task force actually voted unanimously to disband the task force and look at more school-based and school-district-based measuring techniques, how we're going to manage some of those pieces moving forward, and the likelihood that we are not going to be looking at whole-scale model changes, which was really the piece that the task force had been looking at all along. That task force has had several members on board that have been instrumental to the school district, our town manager, a police chief, a fire chief, board of health. We've had members of the teachers' union present, parents on the board, administrators, food service personnel. Without those individuals' help on the task force and continually analyzing that data and helping us make decisions around possible model changes and shifts depending on the data, there's no way we would have been successful last year and this year. I'm very thankful for those individuals on the task force. I'd ask the committee to entertain honoring those individuals at some point in a meeting further ahead, but because that task force has dissolved, does not make that any less of a burden on the school district for the future decisions we have to make, how we're going to get through the rest of this year, support our students, manage the intricate elements that come along with this pandemic, keep students safe, support our students who are remote, set up a plan for the summer that capitalizes on traditional summer programming, but also look at any opportunities that are available for any type of ramp-up intervention for students to try to start beginning that element of addressing gaps with minimal educational live and in-person educational opportunities. Last year, from March on, we went from no school for three weeks to an enrichment process to a targeted standards process of education, to a hybrid model with students in two and a half days a week, to now students pull in. So we really want to examine where we might have gaps in student learning and try to address that. We don't think we're going to be able to address that in one summer or one intervention. This is likely something we've got to think about long-term for our district. How are we going to address those pieces long-term? And that's what we're really going to be looking at shifting some of our thinking. What are the opportunities we can look at for this summer? What will the fall look like? How can we make everyone feel safe, comfortable coming back in the fall? And how can we set up a long-term process where we can really identify where our learning gaps are for our students in a process in which we can address them? It's not a year-long process. This is something that's going to be a long-term plan for us. So that is my update on that agenda item this evening, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you, Mr. Malone. I'll open it up. Any of my colleagues have comments or questions?
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Malone. I definitely think we should absolutely do something for the members of the task force. I know they met almost monthly. I think it was a great idea.
Weekly, Mr. Chair. They met weekly.
I'm sorry, my apologies. Met weekly for months on end, and I couldn't be any more grateful for all the work that those people put in, so we definitely should do something to recognize that. Moving on to new business, Mrs. Reagan?
Okay, definitely my turn this time. Mr. Chairman, I respectfully ask that we pull new business items A and B off of the agenda tonight. These refer to our elementary school handbooks. There are some arrival and dismissal details that were put into effect for this school year in the implementation of our full return of students specifically on April 5th for grades K through six. Those traffic patterns and processes need to be reassessed for next school year prior to publishing in our handbook, certainly with an eye on the most safe arrival and dismissal for our students, but also least disruptive for those neighborhoods. So we'd like to bring these handbooks back at our June school committee meeting.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for any comments, questions, or concerns?
No questions.
No questions, thank you for doing that.
No, I appreciate the attention to detail. I'd prefer to see it updated and ready to go in June versus us adopting something with amendments, so I would be perfectly fine with it coming back in June.
Agreed.
Would you like that in the form of a motion, Mrs. Reagan?
I think that would be helpful, thank you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to remove item...
Postpone.
Postpone A and B from the new business and to bring that back in June.
I'll second.
Can I have a motion and a second to postpone the 2021-2022 PK through four elementary
handbook and the 2021-2022 John Ryan Elementary School Student Handbook to the June 9th, 2021 school committee meeting? Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well.
Thank you for indulging.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagan.
May I comment on that agenda item?
Sure.
Am I missing something? Because I know I'm old and I can't see a lot, but is there anything in these handbooks about restraints or putting kids in safe rooms? Not to my knowledge, no. Well, you have five schools last year that restrained kids, so why wouldn't it be in these handbooks? I'm like shocked. I thought maybe I was crazy. Is this something that you guys are going to do? Because you restrain kids, so you should let parents know how you're going to restrain the kids, and when kids are going back, this is a hard transition for everybody. There's no beds for some kids in these facilities because of social, emotional. And what this parent over here said, "I went to Florida for four months. My family's in school. They're fine." So I respect that. I respect somebody wearing a mask or not wearing a mask, and I'm really happy that you came up and voiced your concern, because a lot of parents don't want to say stuff. But my insides right now, we had 448 restraints on nine kids in the record from 16 and 17. Why there's nothing about restraints in these handbooks is disturbing and horrifying to me, because if you're going to restrain a kid, like you have, you can look on the DESI website, last year, five schools in this town restrained kids. So why wouldn't it be in the handbook? I mean, I'm not for restraint, trust me, but I know you people have rooms, take space rooms, padded rooms, calming rooms, whatever you call it, but there should be something in this handbook that states that. Is that something you people can look at? Because no one had any questions about this.
Ma'am, before you continue with your questions, could I get your name and address for the record, please?
Dorian Healy.
Yep, and your address?
You want my whole address or my town?
Yes, I'd like your full address for the record.
All right. 53.
Yep.
Baldwin Road, Unit 1702.
Yep.
Bel Air Mass.
Okay.
01821.
821. I would advise if you have any concerns, Mrs. Healy, you could reach out to the superintendent or assistant superintendent. Citizens Forum is clearly designed to address things that are on the agenda. I understand we're coming back from a whole year-long pandemic where we've been meeting virtually. I've displayed a lot of latitude. We certainly welcome, we want people to come, we want people to voice their opinion, but we also have rules and agenda that we need to follow. So for example, when the young woman asked the question about enrollment, we need to have that information so we can get the correct information. So I would ask that you reach out to the superintendent or the assistant superintendent for that information.
I understand that, but is, it, it is on the agenda. That's why I was saying it now.
It's ju, it was just removed from the agenda.
It was removed, but.
It was.
It, it, it's a law, so it should be in there. So I honestly didn't think I was going to speak because I never realized that it wouldn't be in here. So it's actually on the school committee too, not just the superintendent.
Well, you can certainly reach out to me as well.
Oh, I will. I know how to reach out to you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Next order of business is the School Committee member appointment to the Elementary School Building Committee.
Could I make a motion to appoint John Stadman?
Okay. I have a.
To School Building Committee.
I have a motion to approve John Stadman to the Elementary School Building Committee. Do we have any, uh, discussion? Great. Is there any other motions for anyone else? With that, I would gladly second.
Keith, um.
I'm sorry?
I nominate myself. I'd like to make a motion to nominate myself to that committee.
Okay. I'll take the motions in order what they came. I have a motion for Mrs. Garabedian. Do I have a second for Mr. Stadman to the Elementary School Building Committee? I'll second that.
One vote of confidence.
I just want to be assured that, um, Mr. Stadman is comfortable with the appointment, with the nomination.
I was just caught off guard. I apologize, Mrs. Garabedian.
Sorry.
No, it's all good. It's all good.
That, that's my hesitation is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that you.
Right.
You had the availability and the time to commit to it.
When, when do we meet?
Every, um, well, I'll share the schedule. Thursdays, um, the second and the last Thursdays of the month typically.
Third Thursday.
The third Thursday. Yeah, I have to look at the dates because it's all in Google Calendar. It's an automatic reminder.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate the nomination. Thank you.
Yeah.
No.
Came tonight.
Thank you. It fits in my wheelhouse, so yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. No reservations.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Do I have a second on Mr. Stad, on Mr. Parsons' motion to nominate himself? Seeing none. I'll take a roll call vote. All those in favor of Mr. Stadman fulfilling the duties of the Elementary School Building Committee? Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Mr. Stadman, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The other part of that new business is simply informing the general public of the new collective bargaining committees and also the advisories and subcommittees of the school committee. Um, I would just ask now that Mr. Stadman has been appointed. Uh, Mrs. Johnson, if you could please update under the Elementary School Building Committee, uh, with Mrs. Demos, uh, Mr. Stadman, and then we can have a final document for that. And with that, we're moving on to the FY22 Valley Collaborative Board Member Appointment. Mr. Malone, would you like to speak briefly to that, to our new colleagues that are unaware of what that process is and what goes on there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Tuxbury's been part of the Valley Collaborative, uh, since it's, uh, orig, originated. Um, certainly that is a programmatically our collaborative that we work with for special education students. Uh, I sit as a board member on that to make determinations around management of that collaboration, of that collaborative, uh, budget decisions and programming decisions. Um, certainly, uh, it's one of, uh, our assets for our district to work with our special education students. Um, and certainly, uh, enjoyed being part of that board and we hope to continue to work together to support the needs of our students.
Great. Thank you. Any comments from my colleagues? With that, do I have a motion to approve Mr. Malone as the FY22 Valley Collaborative Member Board Appointment?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Superintendent Malone as the FY22 Valley Collaborative Board Member. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. It's a unanimous vote. Congratulations and thank you, Mr. Malone, for your continued service. Moving on to School Committee Matters of Interest. I'm going to start, uh, with Mr. Parsons.
None at this time.
Great. Mrs. Garabedian?
Um, I just wanted to mention that, um, I was able to attend my first, uh, Labor Management Meeting, uh, last week, and I think, at least from my perspective, it went very well. I was very collaborative. Uh, we had a lot of, um, you know, great minds come together and, um, I think worked in a really great way. So I just want to share that with people that, uh, you know, I think it was a great step and, um, I was proud to be a part of it.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. Mrs. Demos?
Um, I had a few things, um, that Mr. Malone and, um, Mrs. Regan already touched upon that I wanted to discuss. I wanted to really kind of talk about maybe allocating some of the ESR funds for, um, some of those gaps in learning and, and, you know, could we talk about using that for some personnel, um, for some SEL, for some gaps in learning, you know, how we're going to look at that? I know that it's a tiered level, you know, to 2022, 2023, 2024. You know, we want to get our biggest bang for the bucks, but I really do think that we should probably be looking at maybe getting some, some personnel in over the summer and, and getting, you know, those remote learning academy kiddos, some playground time even, you know, just getting some socialization. It's going to be a big change going from home 180 days to 170 days to plus, um, to coming back in person. Things are going to look different to them. It's going to be, um, a lot more than just your typical first day back at school. And I think that social, emotional learning really kind of needs to be, um, a priority, uh, priority this summer. And I think that it would behoove our district to be looking at those ESR funds, um, and not only for just the academic gaps, but as well as the social, emotional. Um, another thing I was looking into was, I was questioning how many families, um, took advantage of the pool testing? You know, when we get the, um, I'm, I'm very excited to hear that it's approved till the end of the year, but I'm just curious what the numbers look like for us and how many families have actually opted in. And, um, I was curious if we had considered doing any vaccinations in school now that they're starting to get approved with the Pfizer's coming through. And I think that's really kind of our next step. You know, obviously it's not going to be, um, you know, a mandated, uh, a, a, any way, shape, or form, but if we could have that availability to the families, that would make it easier for them if they wanted to. Um, I just, I really, I guess, living that life during the, the school day as well, right? You just want to get back as much normalcy as you can. And I kind of see that as the next step. The more, more and more people that we get vaccinated, the safer we'll all be in getting back into that typical routine. Um, I was excited to read that we have, um, hired our new assistant principal coming up for the fall. Um, I personally went to school with, um, Mrs. Dick and did our programming together for leadership, and I think that she will serve us well. She's been in the district for many years and, um, although, you know, we will miss, um, Eileen Osborne here up at the high school, we'll be using her in different, Mr. Libby's office will be happy to have her. I think, um, we should be celebrating that as well. Um, and I did want to also put a big shout out there to Mr. Wilson, who has loved us, who has now joined the track team that we've run in the consent agenda. That was everything I wanted to share for tonight, and I thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. And Mr. Stadman?
Um, no, I just wanted to, um, you know, it's, I think it's refreshing that we're all back together here. Um, you know, it's, it's, I, I think it's nice, again, just having everybody here, you know, being around, having to pay attention, um, you know, not having the ability to just turn the camera off and yawn or stretch or things like that. Um, obviously, you know, obviously the same thing with students, having them back in class. Um, I think it's kind of the same, same thing and getting that collaborative feeling that, you know, as my, my colleague reached out and nominated me and I was able to reach out and, you know, kind of give her the, give her the gesture instead of over zoom and things like that. So, um, like I said, it's, it's definitely good to be back and have the interaction with, with the public and things like that. So, um, that's, that's all I have for now, sir.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. And, uh, just a quick update about some summer programming with regards to some youth sports. I know Coach Yow at the football, uh, runs a pretty successful flag football. Uh, the week school is out, but the boys and girls high school basketball, uh, programs are both running, uh, week-long or four-day-long clinics in June. They're for grades two through eight at Livingston. Uh, both will be run outside. Both will be run by the coaching staff and current players. The girls are slated to go June 21st to June 24th, and the boys are from June 28th to July 1st. That is all I have this evening. Our next School Committee meeting will be June 9th, 2021, and the subsequent meetings, July 21st and August 18th. With that, do we have any future agenda items, my colleagues?
Thank you.
All right. With that, Mrs. Demos?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much for attending and good evening to those at home.